This conference will now be recorded.
She's good. She just gave you a thumbs up.
Okay. Good morning. I want to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of May 16th, 2022. Can you call Oliver, please?
Member Hannigan?
Present.
Member Hutchins?
Here.
Member Kosinski?
Here.
Chair Marsh?
Here.
Let us ensure that Vice Chair is absent.
Okay, can we all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which is safe, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask if there are any public comments. Seeing none, we'll move on. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
I actually have one comment on the last page. I will be absent in July and possibly August, not June. If no one else has comments, I make a motion to approve the minutes with that change.
Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Carla, how do we approach the number two item?
Well, after every reappointment, you do have select a chair or vice chair from among yourselves. We are absent of one person, so after you open it up to public comments, you can have, you know, discussion some of yourself if you want to, and then you can defer me to pass out the ballots. I'll pass out the ballots, I'll pick them up. If it's majority for one person, then that person is selected as chair, and the person I guess majority would be selected as vice chair. And for whatever reason, we cannot reach a majority today because it's only four of you and you don't have all five, then this item will be deferred until we have all members present.
That's silly. I don't know Robert's rules very well. Can you vote for yourself? Okay.
In an effort-
I'm British, so I don't-
In an effort of expediency, can I make a motion to? No, I cannot. Okay.
She can always make a motion.
I mean, you can make a motion, but per your rules of order procedure that was adopted by the commission, you have to vote my ballot, and then you make a motion to elect the chair.
Okay, let the fun begin.
Just open up the public comment first.
Any public comments regarding the appointment? Chair or vice chair? Seeing none? Can you please pass out the ballots?
I have a comment. Since Mr. Carey isn't here, did he voice any objection?
No, he did not.
Oh, I only choose one. See, I can follow instructions.
It's Monday morning, that's fine.
Thank you.
Still working on my coffee. Okay, we will need to go to another round because I'll order Mark Marsh to stay as chair, and then I'll pass out the ones for vice chair.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for doing it.
I hope this is a term.
Okay, even though Rick Carey is not here, he is appointed as vice chair. For a lot of the more than this, we will email after the meeting. And so now we can make a motion, elect chair and vice chair, and show him the ballot.
So I make a motion to elect or appoint Mark Marsh as chair and Rick Carey as vice chair as indicated by the ballots.
Second the motion.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you again, and I'm sure Rick thanked you. Okay, moving on to discussion items, or again, item three. Question regarding flat roofs. I'm gonna ask Kristi to take us through this if she could.
So there's actually two issues. There's the flat roof, and then there's one issue with the proposed ordinance. Because what we're doing is, it's actually going to be one ordinance that makes two changes. One change, the first change, is to address the request to add the architectural features and articulations to all elevations. That was one of the comments that the board had in the past, that sort of making it on the front, that each elevation would have the required doors and windows and substantial articulation. So the issue came up discussing it with staff, that that would include accessory buildings. The big question became, well, are we going to require sheds to have that same articulation? So one thing that staff came up with was to perhaps have an exception that if you have a shed that's 100 square feet or less, that it would be accepted, yeah, accepted from that requirement.
I would support that.
Me too.
Okay, then we will make that change. Then the second part of the ordinance will be the flat roof. And as you know, we came back with a draft that would allow for flat roofs. And the request was to just limit it to single-family residents. So in doing that, we also came up with a couple other issues that we just want to get direction on to make sure that the draft we're being before you is consistent with the direction. So the first issue is whether or not to remove all flat roof areas because currently, if you have a pitched roof, you're allowed to have a flat roof area that cannot exceed 20% of your total roof area so long as you're using it as a deck porch or some sort of outdoor recreation. So pitched roofs can't have a flat roof area under the current code. And based on our discussion of allowing flat roofs and prohibiting any kind of use of that flat roof, also including access with stairs to that flat roof, storing equipment on that flat roof, the question is, are we still going to allow pitched roofs to have a flat roof area?
Inasmuch as I've got that on my house right now, although the flat roof really does have a pitch to it, I think we should allow it.
Yeah, I support that. I think we, sometimes it helps the architecture. It's an amenity which I think it starts to have been used to in the town. I guess the flip side is how do you address it with an all-flat roof? In limiting or not allowing access to a flat roof area? Yeah, that's what makes this a little bit. That's a little here.
Is there a differentiation between the ultimate top roof that we're trying to avoid using as entertainment areas versus? Because I think I have a similar situation. I live on my second floor, and my deck goes out, and my pool is there, but it's elevated above. But that, in a way, could be considered a flat roof for below, but it's, there's no living space below it. It's all storage. Is there a way to differentiate in that regard? Do you have the similar thing, David?
No, my flat roof covers a porch.
Yeah.
An open porch.
I have a flat roof.
Mark, are we talking about the old-fashioned term of like the widow walk? The flat roof view area up on the top of the building? Or are we talking about like Penny saying you'd restrict the 15% flat roof to the lower floor of the two floors?
Well, I don't think you want to encourage anything that's up above-
Up high.
Roof. I mean, a widow's walk is a-
There are several of those in town.
Right.
There's one in my street, too.
We had one that used a stair tower. And the top of the stair tower is elevator.
Yeah.
Which drove me crazy, but. Yeah, I don't know how we do that. I mean, because the argument will be made, I'm sure. You know, pitched roofs are allowed. Was it 10% or 15%?
It's up to 20%.
20%.
15% is allowed, but you can go to a maximum of 20% if you're going to use it.
Maybe I should start with the what? Is it possible to reduce the area of flat? Because I agree with you, Mark. Sometimes when designing a pitch roof, it's important to have flat areas so that you can actually accentuate, you know, a little section or sometimes a cricket or a valley. You know, allow for that. So as a part of a pitch roof system, you will have areas that are hard things. So could we reduce it to 10 feet, to 10%? And then just say the restriction that on a second level, you will not be able to use it for equipment or recreation.
That it's only architectural if it's on the second story?
Why?
Could we use words like that? I mean, 15% of our typical footprint of a house is going to be around 400 square feet. 20% is going to take you over.
Yeah, it's a substantial area.
Yeah.
Corey, is there any? How does this, you have any experience with how other municipalities? I know flat roofs are fairly recent, so that's what-
Yeah, I don't see differentiation in too many codes between a flat roof and a pitched roof. At least most codes that I've dealt with have allowed both, and they haven't discriminated between the two. Oh, I'm sorry. And the codes that I have experienced with, most of them, at least that I recall, don't differentiate between a flat roof and a pitched roof. They allow both, and they just don't, they don't restrict one or the other. And of course, there are cases that I've seen where they do allow outdoor recreation of some kind or activities on the roof itself. So really, have not seen too many instances that are similar to this.
So can I just clarify for me? The way I visualize our new flat roof idea is it's got a four-inch rise in 12 feet. Is that correct? Is it?
It's a quarter, it's quarter inch, a quarter. Quarter inch of foot.
Quarter inch of foot.
Yeah. It can go as much as 312.
Now, we're calling, but we're still calling it a flat roof, correct? Now, if this 20% thing, does that allow for a perfectly flat roof with no pitch?
That is never allowed.
No, that's not allowed by code.
No, it'd be stupid.
I think we have to be consistent here. I think whether it's 10% that you may have to look at it unfortunately or fortunately, applying to both categories of roof structure. You know, I don't think. The argument will be made. I'm not saying I agree with it. But I don't know unless Kristi can find some way of, you know, leaving, I mean, right now, we've got two clear distinctions, pitched and flat. We've finally adopted flat, so it's a new category in town. But if we do allow 15% or 20% on a pitched roof, it's going to be a hard, hard to defend a request that comes in from a flat roof to have, you know, equal amount of recreational deck area.
Yeah, I think for activity and access, you're going to have to make it all encompassing.
Yeah.
Can we just restrict the recreational aspect, period?
Well, I think that-
We could, or we could say you can only do it on first floor flat roofs. And getting to what Ronnie is saying, do we, now that we're letting you have a full flat roof for architectural reasons or just your own desire, do we need to keep it at 20%? Should we scale that down now to 10?
I think the only thing we can do is maybe-
But make it cross-
I mean, the most impact to neighbors is on either side.
Is what?
Either side, on the side yard.
Yes.
Private side.
Yes.
So I think through this commission, we can encourage that or, you know, make sure when we're reviewing or create some language to that effect that may be restricted to front and back elevations only to try to at least attempt to mitigate the, you know, the impact to neighbors.
Well, that would only be for the use on the surface of it, but if you had a side yard patio, well, I guess that's the same thing. There's still the noise on the side, not entertaining.
I mean, it's, we've, this is something we're going to have to grow into. I don't think we're going to solve it immediately, or I think it's going to take, but I'm surprised there's no other, I know what Corey said was, you know, flat roofs normally have deck areas equally more than pitched roofs. And that's what we're trying to prevent, obviously, or discourage, I should say, not prevent. I don't know. If you do it by percentage of size, I don't know if that really achieves, because it means it can go anywhere.
What maybe perhaps one option would be, if you're going to have it on a flat roof, if you're going to have a flat roof area on a flat roof where you use it for recreation, we could perhaps craft some language to ensure that it's not a direct, you know, overlook to properties on either side. And what I'm thinking about is, we have a property working with now to try to centralize their flat roof area, so it's not like on one side looking over a neighbor's yard. This is on a second story, or on the other side looking over another. It's sort of centralized to the roof so that, the theory being, they can't look directly down on a neighbor.
So you're, it's a setback.
Yeah, on the roof.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to, architecturally, yeah, architecturally, that's going to be a challenge. I'm just thinking out loud here, because if you have it, say, on the rear, and it's in a corner rear, then you're still going to have the ability to look over to the neighbor. But if we come up with some screening element that we can encourage, that it's not going to deny them using that area, say, just the southwest corner of a building, but it has to be screened to the neighbor, maybe one option. I don't know.
How would you screen it, Mark?
By a wall or some kind of, if you recall, I wasn't here, the, I think it was, what, 62 on your street? Number 62? That had predominantly pitched, if you want to even call it pitched, because I had a problem with that. But they did have a rooftop area on the side. I don't know if you noticed it, it had louvers. Something to that effect, an architectural element which will create some privacy or privacy to the neighbor. I think we just have to address it, application by application. It's not something you can direct. You're looking very worried, Neil, what's happening?
I'm just going back to the, all the discussions that we had when we, when we did the flat roof.
Yeah, but-
We were adamantly against entertainment uses, and I don't know why, why that's, that's changed, that we aren't just bringing, bringing it down in elevation where you can entertain. And just by sight angles and everything else, that, that is going to increase privacy for people without totally saying no.
Well, the challenge is, we definitely come to this commission or the town.
Because now we're back to saying, okay, well, you're going to partition part of it off. Is it going to be a hard partition or a soft partition? Now we get to parapet heights because we said that we wanted the parapet to be a non-safety barrier. Now we're going to have a different height for the safety barrier, parapet height for where we're going to allow people. We didn't want access. Now you're going to give access and hope people stay in this arbitrary confine. I think it's, it's becoming-
I know where you're heading, and I don't think you can deny them based on what has been, you know, brought to our attention here, that you can't do it for one and not the other. When I say pitched roof, you can allow it, flat roofs, you can-
I'm not saying deny it, I'm saying keep it at one, at first story level for both.
Because on a pitched roof, it's never going to be on the very, very top, right?
Right.
It could be.
Well, I'm actually saying, what I'm attempting to say, what you're saying is that in a pitched roof, it's never going to be up here on the peak because that's not going to be the flat roof area. So it's going to automatically drop down to this level.
You can't, on a pitched roof, you're not allowed to go-
Chop the top off?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's why I'm saying if there's a way to craft it, that to my question before, is there a way to differentiate between the very top versus the mid-level? And craft the language so that on a flat roof, it was at mid-level?
Well, you can, you can, I think that's a good point, sorry. You can state that it can't be on the upper level.
That's a lot.
Yeah, and just make it, but it's still, it's not going to avoid the privacy.
Yes.
Impact, whether you're 10 feet higher, in some of these cases, 12 feet. So I mean, that's a start. I don't know. Are you confused as we are?
No, I get what you're saying, because that's sort of what, when we talked internally staff, was to perhaps create some sort of limitation, whether it's first story or some type of perhaps height limitation that would prevent it from being so high that you are looking down on multiple neighbors.
Well, I think we have precedent because we don't allow it on pitched roofs any higher than the second floor. That's a good starting point.
Any higher than the top of the first floor?
Top of the first floor.
Yeah, but I call it second.
I understand. For layman.
You guys want to redefine it, go ahead.
No, just-
Go back to school. Second floor is a second floor.
Okay.
Second floor, research and study.
Let me, I don't want to dissect this. Top of the first floor could be 25.
I understand what you're saying, so the second floor extended into, now it's a roof.
Right.
No, what about the percentage, the old 15 or 20? Is that?
I don't have a problem with that.
You neither.
I don't either.
Leave it at 20%? As a max? Well, Kristi, do you want to mention how large that's going to be on the state home? It'll be like 2,200 square feet?
Well, it could be, yeah.
It looks at the entire, you know, roof structure, which if you have any kind of little roof that sticks out, all of that square footage gets included in that calculation.
That's where I was going, but-
I don't think it's.
Some of our lots, it could be enormous, at 20%.
But initially, we were just doing this for single-family residences, not single-family estates, is am I correct on? Right, so now we're morphing into the estate.
Put up that slide that I made.
It currently applies to both, all single-family residences.
Yeah.
Whether an estate or not.
Can we, could we just limit this to single-family residents and then deal with the estates?
Let me show you something. Okay, there's, that's a distribution of lot sizes in RSF. Okay?
From one to one?
Yeah, I had another one somewhere, but do you have the other one? Yeah. I'll pass this down the line, but the, the line on far left is the 10,000-foot lots. Okay? And the average is 14,700. The mean. And that only takes you over three lines. So there's quite a large number of lots that are estate size. So you can't just think of it as RSF and RSE in wood.
Well, from an architectural point of view, if you have a big lot, can that 20% flat roof be done so that it's, doesn't look like an aircraft carrier?
Got two pilots.
I mean, so if you take, if you take a 14, even a 12,500, 13,000 square foot lot, you're going to have a first floor footprint of around 2,800 to 3,100 square feet. So now you take 20% of that. You're at 400 to 500 square feet that you're allowing. And then every one of those houses that goes to the right of the third line, that number gets bigger.
Yeah, but on the smaller lot, it's probably to scale for the lot. And as the lot gets bigger, would it also, that bigger flat roof area be to scale as well?
Well, the proportion's not going to change because it's percentage, but my point is, the bigger the space, the more the activity can be.
Yeah, I mean, your RSN is-
I mean, you're talking about putting a paddleball court on top of the house.
But people can't do that.
Can we have it, well, I think, David, you said it, and maybe Neil's saying, saying, can it be proportionate to the zoning category? Is that what you're?
No, I'm saying the distribution of the lot sizes, there are some enormously big lots in RSF, not just RSE. And there's actually a few RSE lots that aren't anywhere near this size.
Are those just RSEs?
Pardon?
Is that just RSEs up there?
This is RSF.
I'm sorry, RSF.
Does staff have any suggestion?
We could consider a maximum square footage, not to exceed 1,000 square foot.
Or you can have it as an incremental, you know, to your, what was the size you mentioned? 20,000 square feet? I was, sorry, what's the maximum?
Maximum what?
You were using that 500 or 400. What did you base that on?
That's based on about a 13,000 square foot lot.
So can we have a sliding scale? I'm just, I think you're right on the money. I think it's, it's important. But if we had a sliding scale where the percentage, so that, you know, 2,500, you have 15% or, and it's a reducing percentage, the larger the house or larger the lot. That make any sense? It's a diminishing. So that instead of carrying the 15% across the board or an extraordinarily large home, which will create the 400, just to use that as an example.
Well, the larger the lot, the lower the percentage needs to be.
That's correct. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying, which will, because the lot size is going to determine the size of the building.
That's, yes, the 35%.
So what I'm saying, come up with a sliding scale, the larger the lot, you know, the less the-
Yeah, I, okay, I mean, I've got data on all the lot sizes.
Well, I think-
Lot in town. I've got data on all the lot size, there's a lot in town, um, and I do have them done by, bracket, I have them bracketed.
You know.
Those that are 10 and under, uh, 10 to 12, 12 to 15 and above 15, I think is the way I've got them broken down. And that's a normal distribution also.
Tracy, can I suggest, I kneels onto something I think that's important when it comes to second level, second floor deck size. Would you be available to meet with Steph?
Absolutely.
Is that okay for?
I gave all this data actually to Wayne before he left, so you probably already have the data.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's very difficult for us to, some of us to absorb.
You know, yeah, you gotta be doing math in public to do it. I don't.
I, I, I think it'd be better if, if you had like a mini workshop with Steph to bring up your point, which is a, is a real
Right.
concern. Um, and then come back so that at least we'll have some parameters to which to voice them.
Happy to do that.
Is that okay, Tracy?
Well, yeah, it will be up to all of you if you want a consensus for that to happen.
Can I clarify that we're talking about the flat roof on the second floor regardless of whether it is used for recreation or not? It is a, it can just be a roof over a lower deck or it could be a flat roof that's being used.
I think we're looking at recreational use.
Only. So you're not limiting the size of that flat roof if it's simply over a lower.
Right.
So.
With no access.
Cause that's. If you have a flat roof area, it's limited to 15%. If you use it for a deck porch or some other recreational use, you go up to 20%. So currently, if it's just that for whatever architectural feature, you have that flat roof area on your pitched roof, you're limited to 15%.
Right. But that's what I wanna make sure we're making the distinction.
Yeah. I think the concern is occupiable second floor or flat roof area.
Right.
Just to kind of.
I agree.
But I think it's, it's not, it's Monday morning. We're, um, I don't, I don't think we're in a position to solve. I think, I appreciate, I know I personally appreciate the statistics and that you're bringing back and, excuse me. But I think if we had some real strong recommendations or suggestions, we could, I think, come up with a, a more unified agreement or response.
Yeah.
Is anybody, do we need, need to make a motion to that? Or just?
So is the, is the, just so I understand, is the consensus that we'll leave it for both a pitched roof and a flat roof? You can have a flat roof area up to 15% if you're not using it, up to 20% if you are using it, and then we're gonna have a sliding scale based on your total square footage of your lot size? Is that the consensus direction? Is that stated?
So you're going to allow recreation now?
Well, I think we're gonna be challenged at some point, so we might as well be. You know.
With the overall limitation that it's your second floor story.
It's on the second floor.
Second floor, okay.
Now, my, my question becomes, um, going back to the all flat roof house. How it differs from the pitch house, the pitch, this 15%, are we going to allow the entire 15% to be recreational, therefore it's safety barrier? Okay, then the regular flat roof that in the past we were allowing no access and no safety barrier and no utilities. Are we now going to partition off the part that's recreation and only allow that access, only allow that utilities and only have that with a safety barrier?
That's the intent.
Is that, do I get that consensus from everybody? Cause it's gonna affect how D'Ronnie and I and.
And if it's a recreation, it's gotta have a higher parapet than 32.
Yeah, it would have to meet the 36 inch, yes.
Architecturally, it's not gonna work.
That's fine. Yep. But we have to get to the use or allowable use first.
Okay, I just wanna know where.
Well, I think it's, the good thing is that we're ahead of the challenges that we're gonna face. So, which I know they're, I'm sure coming because.
Are we, are we over, are we overthinking or overdoing this? Is there within our codes now, is there a limitation that based on all our setbacks and our sizes and far, et cetera, et cetera? If we simply said no recreation area above the second floor, the current codes, does it not confine them to an appropriate square footage?
You said above second floor.
So the, the, the only change we would be making would say no, because I, I agree, we, we talked nonstop about no recreation. But we all in our minds were thinking, I, I, I should speak for myself. I was thinking about the upper floor. So if we just made the comment in the code that said, no, you know, leaving the 10, the 15, the 20, everything the way that it is, if we just said no recreation above the second floor, would that accommodate the concerns we think we're going to have?
Yes and no. I think one part is answered, but the, the part that I think Neil's bringing up is the potential area that, that will become, if I'm understanding.
Well, I would think that our codes already had that sliding scale built in for the size of the lot.
For flat roofs. That Christie corrected me or Steph?
Well.
Well, no, just for an overall FAR, it's built in.
Okay, right now it's a straight percent.
Yeah.
It's going to be different on a one-story house than a two-story.
Yeah.
Cause the footprint of the two, the one-story house is the max of the house, right?
Right.
So it's 36% of the lot size.
Right.
And now it's 20% of that 36% of the lot size that's allowed for flat roof, which could be huge. So.
Okay, I was just trying to simplify it.
Yeah, I, I'm with you.
I mean, I, I think it may be a, a combination of the two.
Let's see, let's see. I think, I hate to be abrupt, but.
Yeah.
I just have one question because the town commission signed off on flat roofs, I, I think unanimously. And one of, no recreation, no, nothing on it. And so now we're going backwards on this.
We're, we're just being, looking ahead for the potential because as Christie pointed out, you know, this is an open door opportunity for a applicant or a homeowner to say, you know, why is it allowed in pitched roofs criteria and.
Yeah, we're not being consistent.
Yeah. So that's, I mean, it's, it's, it's an open.
I mean, the opportunity is there to close the door and say on any flat roof, whether it's a hybrid house or whether it's an all flat house, no recreation, that is a choice. I don't know if it's something we, we wanna take or something that we could make stand.
I, I, I don't because think of the two-story house that has a flat roof or floor at the second floor because that's their bedroom balcony.
Right.
That's recreation. I, I don't wanna restrict that.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think we just need to.
I think we need more information.
Yeah. But I, again, I applaud you for bringing it up. I think it's, you've given us a stat.
I give you what?
Stat.
Stats, yeah, damn numbers.
Be like that pilot that landed without knowing how to fly. Anyway.
So the assumption would be then for drafting that if we're gonna continue to allow a flat roof area that will be utilized for recreation, that then the parapet around that area could go to 36 inches?
It has to be.
So then I think the last issue we have is just to confirm the max height of the tiding. Currently, there's a little discrepancy in the code, but pitch roof's currently at 16 feet for a single story and 24 feet for two-story. Um, with the proposed flat roof, it would be at 14 feet for a single story and 24 feet for a two-story structure. I'm just asking for confirmation if that's what we still want.
I think that's my recollection, that's correct.
All right.
Okay, boy. Oh, sorry, can I? Can you just step up please?
I'm just curious if there's any address, addressing in here of access to that recreational area. Because I know one of the concerns with 6273 North Ocean is the exterior stair that is right on the property line, basically. So are you suggesting that there should be internal?
Yeah, that's.
I just, it hasn't been mentioned.
Is that the consensus, an internal?
Yes.
Access only?
Definitely. I think we had some verbiage somewhere.
Currently in the code, it's not restricted how you have access.
That's a great, great point.
Okay, so, all right.
All right, any more comments or on that?
Okay, we got it. Okay. I know, I just have to, have to think about, no, I'm sorry, but think about my house. Okay, so I have internal access, but I have one external access. And because it's all the way across the back of my house, I wouldn't have egress on that side of the house. Well, I guess I would to the deck.
Yeah.
Is that, does that cover life safety?
Yes.
Okay, forget the question.
Your luck.
Been there a long time.
Okay. Can we move to the item number four?
Would we need to make a motion on that?
No.
I couldn't write a motion.
No, I meant to defer it. Okay.
We're volunteering Neil to lead us. Okay, item number four. Administrative variance Procedures for Grandfather Structures. Okay, Christie, I'm gonna.
Chair Marsh, this, as you remember, we just updated this ordinance fairly recently to clean it up a little bit and to clarify the allowance for grandfather structures to expand or enlarge into the setback as long as they don't exceed the 5% total population and also that they don't exceed the maximum height because this does allow not only setback encroachments, but other dimensional encroachments. What was, uh, the direction that was given to staff was to make a further change so that the allowance under this administrative variance would solely be to allow the grandfather structure to encroach into the existing area of encroachment. So that, uh, by way of example, you would have a house that encroached into the side setback and they wanted to expand, that then the expansion would only be into that similar side setback encroachment. But they couldn't then encroach into a new setback area. It does still maintain the 5% limitation on that calculation. Um, and obviously the maximum building height is also maintained. So in the agenda, there's only really two areas that work spanning is to make clear that you're limited to your, to your current encroachment.
I think at that commission meeting, if my memory's correct, we looked at the proposed addition that is in part, part of the package we received, and there was some thought that.
We had a different drawing too.
There was some thought that allowing the proposed addition to extend all the way to the right side so that, that that's part of the house wouldn't look so chopped up.
Well, it's a percentage.
I, I realize this is a percentage, but that's, that's, if I understood the commission speaking that night, there was at least some interest on their part to allow that proposed addition to extend to the right side as we're looking at this so that it would be a uniform front.
I don't think we want, personally, I think we wanna encourage that because then you're putting more impact to the right away. I mean, that's, it's all depends on the architecture, character of the house, but the less mass you have on the street, I think is more of an advantage. I'm just challenged by this, and I asked D'Ronnie to, can you explain this example in terms of the figures?
I actually could defer that to someone else. I actually did a little math, there's no, and it doesn't.
Okay, I couldn't, I couldn't figure it out.
This, this, this again is right, keeps raising its head. I, we keep smashing it down. It's like whack-a-mole. The, the math in this is wrong.
Yeah.
And we corrected it. I know, I know I've corrected it twice at meetings over the last year and a half. And, and it just.
Yeah, this is.
It's an, it's a hundred by 80-foot lot to make this math work, which isn't. And even that is a lot that doesn't exist in our, our SF property. Smaller lots are.
Yeah, I, I think we're all in agreement because I, I thought this one yesterday and I couldn't make this work.
I mean, can we go back into the minutes of the meeting where chairman, or not chairman, but commissioner, which collect, brought this up because at that meeting, we correct, we corrected this map and we had a drawing that showed where we would allow encroachments and where we wouldn't. We had yes, no in different blocks that.
And you guys want that again, the yes and no, you did have it in color. It won't come out in color, what's in the code, but you do want the yes and no to be added as part of the picture.
Well, I, I mean, I think when we, every time we keep discussing this, I think that.
But it used to be that the addition was on this side, encroaching off, off of into this one, and that's where you put the X and the no. The proposed addition to be alignment with this back end here, this is what, what would be allowed. But you say you, you don't want that. You want us to go back and leave under here, but just put the word no.
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 I think you're saying you just want the math to work on the, on the diagram.
The graphic is correct.
Actual concept of what we're changing is good. We want to keep the encroachment only in the existing encroached upon setback.
It used to be the proposition used to be here and it used to encroach into this one and this one, and that was the issue with it. So we took it from here. We took it from here and this side and moved it to this side because this is what would be allowed to align with the check.
The graphic is correct, but the math is, is totally.
So the math, we can definitely look at your drawing and see the math that you put on there and we can change that.
Just so that the math supports what is being, being said, but
Yeah.
I, I agree with the changes.
Yeah.
Then what? That's just an example of one possible encroachment, correct? It's not, it's not showing.
It's because the existing encroachment is already on that side.
No, I, I understand, I understand that, but, but, but we, we picked, we picked an example that doesn't, doesn't show all the implications is my point. I'm not disagreeing with this drawing. I'm just saying it's not, what's the word, all encompassing. It's just, this is a one-case drawing to my understanding of it.
It's just an example.
It's just.
It's just trying to simplify. Now, I've used this. It's just, it's just trying to simplify. Now, I've used this. Before personally in town and the five percent and it works, but it's just the area that's nonconforming.
I disagree with that.
You can't transfer it to another area or whatever. This is.
What's your concern that we're missing?
My concern is that it's that the person that's proposing the encroachment isn't getting a full picture of what's not allowed. They're only getting a one case example here. And.
But what else is not allowed?
Well, I don't, I think if.
Do you want us to maybe put it in different areas and say, no, this would not be allowed?
Well, that's, that, I think that was more obvious in the other drawing.
I see.
So you want us to show what's not allowed versus what is allowed?
Both.
Or you want, so you want us to have a second image of what's not allowed?
That's, I thought that was important.
Can it be on the same image? You just.
Well, I think it was the other to the left.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
We showed conforming and nonconforming. This is just showing one nonconforming. I can't hear you, Martin.
Yeah, Martin, why do you?
Yes, the wording is changed. It's an example of what he's talking about. He wants the example to show what can and cannot, to be more clear to people what can.
That's correct. That's, that's simplifying what I'm trying to say.
So. One of the things we've done here, if you guys recall, we were able to put it up, is the drawing before was very. Was, we have many photocopies of photocopies of photocopies of drawings that are in our ordinance that are very confusing.
Right.
We have also situations where we actually have verbiage that's attached as an explanation to a drawing instead of actually being, you know, forward. And I think those are the things we ought to be looking at. For example, the narrative that says the example above shows a typical should be a hundred foot by eighty foot. Where the current setback has dashed lines. Our new drawings doesn't have this dashed line. Should we remove that and make the verbiage agree with our new drawing? And ultimately, I mean, the drawings are just to help the code. I think it should be expressed in our code. If we said we don't want an encroachment in any other than the existing site. You know, the language, I think, and even in, in, in construction and with building official determinations. The, 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 the language, the verbiage always supersedes the drawing.
Okay.
You have the, the lines, it's just not, you can't see them clearly on the screen.
They do have, one thing that we could do though, as you guys were talking, is maybe we can make all of this, take the dash line and only leave it on the encroachment area. And make it clear that it can only go with a dashed line.
But if you know dashed line, that's a hatch. Maybe I'm thinking technical.
That's the way it is.
No, but I think, I think that shows the compliance.
Yeah, I understand.
I don't see anything wrong with this personally. I, I think. I just think the math is incorrect and.
And then other than that, you go by the first.
Cross hatching and hatching are different, so let's. Okay, I think this illustration I need, it may need to be embellished a little bit clearer. But I think it tells a story or the intent. The math is incorrect and the verbiage can support what I think the commission. Correct numbers. I actually had my wife check this and she's no math and she couldn't. Okay. Work in progress. Any public comment? I think Martin's co-author this. Does it satisfy your intent?
To me, to me, the drawing itself is, and it gives a visual impression of it. But the actual code is what is written down. And there it says you can only encroach into that area where the encroachment already is.
Preexisting encroachment.
If, if ten people, if ten people need to, you know, look at it and they're not predeed.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I understand that.
All right, do we need a motion on this or?
To just change the math, the verbiage and also the example drawing.
Yeah, embellish the graphics.
If you want to, if you want to move it forward with those changes to the town commission, we'll need a vote. If you want us to bring the draft back to you and based on the discussion today, we just need a consensus.
Any opinion, but I think we can move it along.
I, I agree, and you could just email us the drawing before it goes. So I would make a motion to approve. Approve these, approve this draft ordinance with the mathematical and drawing enhancements, mathematical correction and drawing enhancements that we discussed and perhaps send that drawing to the planning and zoning board before the next commission meeting, but proceed.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. Okay, let's keep rolling. Item five. Discussion regarding the impacts of enclosed porches on maximum floor area. This is a biggie.
Doesn't it somewhat relate to what we were just talking about?
Absolutely does. That's, that's where. That's where I actually did the, the other distribution for. Is this mine to lead the talk or?
Go ahead and now.
Do we have public comment first or after?
After.
Okay. Okay, so. My concern with this area is it's too bold. One is. I don't think there's enough written definitions of some of these ideas. As to what. A covered porch is. Or not, or where it goes from being a covered porch to one screen away from being a habitable structure. And. How many sides does a covered porch have to have? When it goes from being a porch to being. What you call it?
Yeah.
No, not, no. The extra building on the property. Accessory structure, yeah, where, where does it cross that line? And when is the deck? Enclosed or unenclosed? If it has one wall, two walls in the corner of a building. Is it still unenclosed or is it partially enclosed? We don't define those things, okay? But all of them impact FAR. And they impact them in ways that when I've looked at the property data and, and done it, you can, you can see trends over time, okay? We are seeing houses now that are coming into the tenth of, of a percent. Of maximum FAR. If we go back and the same properties that I show you there, if we go back and look at what the FAR is. We were, we weren't impacting on the FAR. We weren't impacting on the seventy five percent second floor rule. That was, that was never the issue. The lot sizes that we have now, when we're trying to maximize what we can on our ten thousand or eleven thousand foot lot. People are cutting a corner off of a house and building a garage that you can get a car in. Because we require a car to go in the garage. You can't put your bicycle and trash can in the garage because the garage is a FAR number. But the summer kitchen that's on the back of the house that's covered, that then also has a second floor covered deck. Above it. Is outside the FAR. So. Those areas are growing every time we look at drawings. And. We are getting away from single family homes. So the thirty five percent footprint. That protected how big a single family structure could be. Now we have two story structures that are going from the footprint that the FAR would require. And they're in, they're moving out into this thirty five percent footprint that we allow. And without getting into all these numbers, we can have covered porches that are loosely attached at the corner of a house by. What was that one? Maybe four or five feet that it touched the house, made it classified as a covered porch? And that thing could have been up to seven or eight hundred square foot. It's bigger than an accessory building. If that was an accessory building, we'd be all debating of whether we wanted that on somebody's lot because of what it does to sightlines for other people that live close by that are trying to. Have a view of the water or don't have a view of the water now. So. My question becomes, and I, and. I don't want to. I don't want to go on a witch hunt because I'm not trying to. All I want to say is. Where, where do we see this going? And where do we want to permit it to go? Is it okay that we could have almost two story structures all over a lot? That exceed the FAR by several hundred square feet?
No, I, I, well said, and I think there's a, quite a, I'll just speak out loud here. I think our definitions are, need to be redone. To your point, I, I, I'm actually quite shocked and I shouldn't be. Covered porches, anything with a hard roof, permanent roof structure is in most municipalities included in FAR. And we have a huge loophole here.
Yeah.
And it's not that we're trying to be very strict and deny people, but I know and Cory, again, I correct if I'm wrong, but. Anything that's a permanent hard roof. Is counted breezeways, whatever barbecue, cabanas, whatever, that counts as hard or FAR. In all other municipalities. So I think the simple thing is to redefine this in the ordinance. To redefine that anything with a hard permanent roof is included in FAR. And it goes back to the, the old days of carports. And now those carports are long gone because they've expanded the house into living area.
Right.
And that's what set the whole tone, especially in this, most of these communities, smaller community houses that were smaller here in the sixties. Everybody needed more space, so they enclosed their carpet and no garage. But that's one of the intent. I know from other, I can speak about Palm Beach and Gulfstream. That anything with a permanent hard roof goes against. Even in, I know in Gulfstream, even a canvas fixed awning goes to FAR. So. I think this needs to be addressed and redefined clearly. Again, what you said was totally correct.
Yeah, I, and I, and I'm not trying to pick that number because I, I know people want to use their property and people want to have some of these things. But right now, this side of it's open ended. This side of it that is the structure as we define it right now is FAR. And if we tighten up FAR, maybe we have to actually define what we will allow above FAR that would be.
It's.
And the other type of amenity to the house. But the way it is now, it's just, it's the Wild West.
Can be deemed living space, whether it's indoor or outdoor, it's still occupiable living space. You know, so I think, Kristia, I'm. That's my suggestion. I mean, I think we do, it's got to be consistent.
Yeah, the way you handled it before was when the development plan came before you, you made the condition that the breezeway could not be enclosed. But we need to, you know, want to keep going that way, need to address it.
Yeah, I think we have to be kind of a broad definition and using hard permanent roof area will be included in your FAR calculation.
Good question. Do you just want to proceed with a change? Tax amendment, or do you want us to do some research to surround the communities?
I, I, I asked the public, I know, I can ask Manny who, who's here on something else, but I'm sure he will confirm my. My definition. Why do you come up Manny, if you?
If you can. Let me watch your, your question was.
The question is if you have a hard roof over an open patio, breezeway, whatever, that in most municipalities, not all. Use that against your FAR.
Well, I know when Alapan, Hypoloxo does, so.
Yeah, it's consistent throughout coastal communities. So I, I don't think we're venturing into area that people aren't aware of or.
No, I mean, I mean. I know the difference in the compliance and that's why I brought it up, but what I'm saying, what I'm also agreeing with. Is the people that, you know, have a large piece of property. That do want some of these other amenities. If, if, you know, if you take the, the summer porch. And now say that's part of the house, then that, the rest of the house has to shrink.
Correct. That's the whole intent is.
Well.
And it's.
And does Steph agree that redefining FAR with the fixed flat, with a fixed roof, being consistent with other municipalities? Is that going to help address the overall issue?
The answer is yes, it would eliminate that issue. We are, we would anticipate significant pushback however.
It's never too early to start.
Sure. When, when, when we looked at some of these places with the big porches.
Yes.
One of my concerns was we approved this and then the owner later goes back and, and encloses it either through a variance or just.
Does.
Does it and now all of a sudden, instead of thirty six, they're at a forty. And so I, if the things that we've approved are done, but I think going forward, this is a great idea.
I mean, I, I, I deal with this daily, so. This is nothing abnormal. And I think it's, it's time to wake up to what you just presented, the, the alternatives of what could happen. Or I think it's, it's never too late.
Mark, do you open up for public comment?
Maybe. A little definite here, sorry. Anybody have any public comment? Here comes. I'll be gone.
As you see, I go slow. So the, the thing to remember is that there are developers, builders and members of the.
Sorry, can you state your name for the record?
I'm Terry Brown, Harvard I S A. I just assume everyone knows who I am.
Oh, yeah, we do, but.
That might be a bad thing. That there, there is a underground movement to try to increase FAR from thirty six to forty percent per year. It's been unsuccessful, as you know. So getting a grip of what definition you have for a covered porch or patio. Is, is a way to look at it, I think, because. You might want to restrict the size of those. So that you don't get into this increase of the FAR, which is going to come as soon as you start monkeying with this. People are going to say, well, let's just increase the FAR to forty percent. That's a, that's a decision by the commissioners, the town commissioners would make that decision. And I know there's people on that commission that love to see it increased. So that's my caution. Just be careful what you. So that's my caution. Just be careful what you do. Now, I have some other comments. I hope I can wait until you, your comments come up, if you, unless you want me to go now with your other comments.
While you do, please.
Can I comment on what Terry's saying? In this, is this a discussion or are we just?
Yeah, we can ask questions or share.
Is there something to have discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's.
So can I go ahead now?
Well, can I just? Can I just make a?
Is it pertinent, is it pertinent to this subject?
No, it's, it's unrelated to what's on the agenda and I can wait so late.
That's, that's.
Okay, please. I don't disagree with you that I, I think this has a tremendous impact on. What's been the, is the new norm. It wasn't the old norm, because I can show with the data that I have, how. Small the porches and things, balconies used to be.
That's right. And if you don't restrict them, the house looks bigger.
Okay, but now, so now we have, we actually have a de facto increase in FAR.
That's right.
Because we let these things be outside the definition.
Just visually, they're a lot bigger.
Well, structurally, everything, yeah. So. I don't, I don't know if, I, I know there's gonna be tremendous pushback to, to the definition of everything that's under a hard roof is FAR. Uh, I'm not saying it's wrong, but what I'm saying is. The last, least five or six houses that I know have come through here have had a tremendous amount of, uh, extra. Uh, defined non-FAR porches and, and whatever. And, and I don't, I don't know if. We need to increase the FAR or whether we say this is the FAR, this is whatever, and anything else you do above that. Whether we say you could have an extra three, four, or five percent. And it can only be these sorts of things.
No. Sorry. Thanks, Nick. I think we just make, make it simple and consistent. By coming up with a FAR.
And then let the commission have the fight as to how, how much the FAR is.
I don't mind fighting. I don't mind fighting.
It was correct that some people have gotten away with including them.
Oh, there, there are many instances.
I know.
Many.
Many.
So.
I, I mean, I think we can make the statement that the way it is now, we can't control the size. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So I think we need to play catch-up and I think it may be a rough. Road, but it's, it's worth it for the sake of the. You know, intensity of the buildings in town. So, so, um, do we need a motion in this one? I hope.
Let's get one, um, just so it's clear.
Okay. Anybody want?
You wanna go?
The Jerk can make a motion.
Is that not correct?
Yeah, he has to offer it to someone else first.
Okay.
No, go ahead, please.
Well, I make a motion to. Review the classifications or the definition of what's a hard roof open structure. And, um, then that structure or those structures will be part. Of the FAR calculation for any development or expansion of an existing house. Is that as general as I can make it?
Do you, um, just clarify, do you want that to review or start the process for a tax amendment?
Start the process. Is there a second?
Well, you got.
Can I second too?
I've been seconding all morning. I'll second it. Unless you want to.
I, I, I would rather be the person that provides the data than.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Now we got Manny's.
Okay. Item number six is review of development plan review calculations. Another math challenge here. Come on up Manny.
So let me just recap just real quickly. At your last meeting, you asked that Manny come to this meeting because you noticed that. The calculations that he had done differed very largely from what the applicant had for. Calculations. So you wanted him to come and tell you how he does his.
Well.
State your, state your name for a quick piece.
Manny Glazier's on your notice for the Town of Ocean Ridge. And the method that I use, I. The plans are laid, I lay out the, uh, the plan and I'll start with the site plan first, just to check. The site plan will give me, uh. Your setbacks, uh. For all the buildings, the building, the pool, driveway, and so forth. Second phase would be your review of the actual measurements of the, uh. Building, which would be if it's a two-story building in the first floor, and then I dissect it in sections. And then I mark, I mark each, I number each section. Meaning what I do is. Let me give you like a rectangle, one, two, three, and four, or squares. And one, two, three. So I'll get the measurement of number one square. And then write it out, what the measurements are multiplied, and then write down the number. Once I, I do all of that, I tally all of the numbers. And that'll give me the first floor calculation, which would be, I, it covers two things, not only the first floor, but it also gives me the lot coverage. Now, mind you, I use a ruler, scale ruler of. The. Precision of that could vary a little bit from the applicants. They, I'm constantly being told by the architects, and when I do call, the reference to the difference in my numbers is the fact that, well, we use CAD and it's very accurate. Mark can attest it. Yeah, that's what they use. So I provide a margin of error on my side. Considering fact that sometimes the tools in my trade for measurement, magnifying glass. Rendles, rulers, that sort of stuff, but. At the end, I'll do the first floor, go to the second floor calculations, provide the necessary, apply the necessary, um. Zoning requirements such as, uh, the three-hundred-foot, uh, credit for vaulted ceilings. Uh, credit for the square footage of the stairway. And it's, uh, and from that, it's tracked and, and give my numbers, I guess. At that point, I guess I don't know.
Yeah, I think it was noticed at the last, uh, meeting that Manny's calculations added up to a hundred percent and the architect's, um. Calculations did not add up properly. Um, and I think we can, we know that, you know, Manny does this, he knows our code. So he's more experienced in doing the calculations in this town, knowing what those are, as opposed to somebody who's from. And I think Manny, what they're looking at is because, for example, on sixty-sixty, where the applicant has that their. You know, FAR is six thousand and you have it there FAR is four thousand nine hundred. So I think they're just looking into that difference about what's making it.
Is that village?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, look at the total under air, just as an example.
Yes.
Okay, look at total under roof as an example. I mean, we're talking thousands of square foot discrepancies. So I'm not doubting the veracity of your ability to do it. I'm just saying, when it comes and is presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, why is there a discrepancy?
Of that large number.
And.
Something, well, let me just, I know what you're saying. Where sometimes what they'll do is they'll take literally everything that's under, uh, that, uh. I total under roof, they'll take everything into consideration. Well, some, I'll just take what's counted, uh, towards, uh, the calculations in this, uh. Back in the calculation sheet, they'll take every, sometimes they'll do that and vice versa, depending on what the, uh, uh, question is like. If you take a look at, uh, total floor area, that's what I, I have sixty-one. What does she have?
Are you looking at sixty-two or are you looking at sixty-six?
Um.
Sixty-sixty.
Sixty-two at Harbor?
Yeah, you're looking at sixty-two.
Okay, mine doesn't have, I don't have theirs. No, there.
Let's look at sixty-sixty then, because you do have.
Yeah.
Okay, let me get back to, uh, on point here. My calculations, I base them on what I do, and if there's, if there's considerable amount of discrepancy, I'll contact the architect. The, uh, well, first, I'll contact the, the architect, but contact Carla later to show her what, what the discrepancy is, if it's over the allowed. Uh, FAR or lot coverage. We'll have a meeting here with Gang and Carla and discuss that, but, uh, right now. You're asking me to say the big difference. That's, that's what I, I came up with in addition.
I, I understand that, and I'm going to, since I'm part of the town, I'm going to put my confidence in what you present.
Yes.
What I'm concerned with then is why does the applicant not understand what's going on? Well, that's what I'm, I'm concerned with, concerned with, is that when it comes here, the applicant actually doesn't care that there's. Several thousand square foot difference between what you said and they said?
Well, I think.
Because I don't know how then I trust what they're doing.
Well, the use. It becomes a concern if their calculation is over and that, I think, is the issue here. If their numbers are. Within the allotted yet off. Again, that, 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 at that point, um, I don't really give it much of a concern. I, I, as long as my numbers are underneath, theirs are underneath. And that difference, you're right, it's not very accurate, but unfortunately, that, it's still within the allotted, uh, um, tolerance. At the permitting level, Guy will take a look and, and, uh, take a look at his, his, uh, in the procedure of, uh, the permit review. And if there is any question that, uh, that surfaced that may be contradicting, but at this point, when I do this, I show that it's there below and meet. At least what's required, and I found it, and my calculations show the same thing. I really, I don't really.
German Marsh, in other towns, do you see where the architect doesn't correct it to the point where they're compatible with each other within reasonable tolerances?
No, you sign and seal a document that should comply with the requirements. And not a lot of towns do this. Unfortunately, I wasn't here at the meeting, so I don't know you. I heard you mention that the architect. Didn't explain why he was.
So different.
So different.
Right.
He didn't know, because he didn't know he had Manny's calculation.
And I think if, if it showed the difference of a hundred square feet, we can have Manny's look at the applicant and go over the calculations prior to coming here. Um, and that way they can work it out about how they're calculated, even if it is within the code, just given that they are within a hundred square.
I mean, I wa, I want to, I want to be confident that the town is doing it correctly, and if there's a discrepancy. That. They're helping each other make sure that neither one of them made a mistake. That's what, that's what I'm concerned.
Yeah, I mean, the, the architects.
Because we both can make mistakes, the town or the applicant.
Yeah.
And Manny has caught from times where even though the applicant. On the drawing has a, a certain, you know, distance or dimension, when they go to write it on the calculation sheet, it doesn't match. So he has caught that a lot of times.
Sure.
And it happens.
Yeah, it can be off by ten, twenty, maybe even a hundred feet. I understand that.
Well, there's.
And that's my margin of error between fifty to a hundred.
Sure, I understand that.
Architects are not mathematicians, okay, so have, have concern. And we're creative, okay? Um, however, yeah, I think. You know, I've known Manny forever and I know he does it in a much cruder fashion than, than most people, but, uh. I think we have to go by, you know, rely on his figures, and if there's a discrepancy, then the architect should be made aware of that and be able to justify it. If they can't, then, you know, the, the project comes to a halt.
Well, we, yeah, it'll never get to that point, uh, where they start. The. At the calculation level, I think maybe, maybe I will, if there's such a large discrepancy, just, uh. Having a setup a meeting with them to show us, because in area, there's, in meetings that I've had with Carla Guy and the applicant. Uh, to show me where I, where my numbers are wrong and there's a right, and I showed them how I dissect their plans and then measure each little square off.
Let me just say, there are areas that are a little bit. In question. You mentioned staircases and some credit areas. Um, that you don't count twice, for example, because you have one, but you mentioned, um, vaulted ceilings, anything over fifteen. Feet. Needs to be.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sorry. Included as additional square footage.
Right.
So I think that's what we have to rely. Durani, close your ears, please. Um, most municipalities, because it's gonna cost us money, go with Blu-ray now, and you can't fake it. Okay, Blu-ray is an overlay system. Where it's used for both architectural elevations, compliance in terms of what was approved and what's permitted. And it does likewise for floor plan calculation. So there's technology coming, which we're trying to fight. No, it's, it's, I, I think the old-fashioned way, if there's a discrepancy, I think they, parties need to meet and. See who used what and how they created it.
Well, in, in addition to that though as well, I mean, it's, uh, it does add up if you consider. They'll sometimes forget to measure from the outside exterior of the wall, which is eight inches on each side. And some areas have a combination of both.
And yeah, sometimes you use one or the other. I saw that in the definition.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Can I, can I ask the question based on several of the topics we've had today, and, and you mentioned. That the total under roof area, so theirs is sixty-nine hundred and ours is fifty-five hundred. You said they sometimes take everything. And pop everything that's under roof. So this would go back to what we're talking about with a hard roof structure, right? This would show us that it was sixty-nine hundred versus our current calculation at fifty-five hundred.
Under roof excludes eaves.
Okay.
Suppose one eave is, okay, sure.
Or the porch could be an eave.
Yeah.
But that would show a pretty big.
Okay, good.
I think, I think it's good. I mean, if, if there's a discrepancy, it should be staff and applicant level, and then if there's a big issue, then bring it to us. All right. Kristi, I don't think that was one of yours, right? All right.
Since I think we're gonna trust Manny, correct?
Yes.
And we'll have a development review, um, if you guys have some clarifying questions regarding home calculations, but we'll kind of have that where if a hundred square feet difference. We'll meet beforehand and try to get a square way before we talk to you.
Okay, um, moving on. Any commission? Comments? I just have one. I want to thank Britt Flanagan for, for service as a alternate. And I also want to invite our, uh, welcome, our two. I can't, what's Mr. Rodriguez, Rob Rodriguez?
And he will, he is not seen at all these year full time. He just couldn't be present today.
Okay. Well, that's good to have some more full-time residents or commissioners. And I did mention to the commission, town commission, that, you know, this board is very well-balanced and very educated. Just wanted to acknowledge that we're doing, we think, a service to the community. And we're proud and. We don't mind within reason, uh, offering our time and service. Oh, sorry, Terry. Oh, sorry, Terry.
Can I have something else also, I'm also curious coming up, is there one of you that would like to delete something? Well, actually, I think, I think Ricky's going to be back, but anybody that wants to be deleted after this new commission meeting.
He'll be, I'll be. When's the next one, June? I'll be here, he's out of town, right?
I think he's still, I can double check, but just, I need a backup.
Well, yeah, I appreciate him doing that. If not, I'll, I'll. Monday's just a terrible day for me, so. But I will. We could have a little meeting here, we got most of them here. Go ahead, Terry.
Terry Brown Harvard Drive South, I come to you because I don't know where else to start. And I want you to know that I'm not an outlaw naturalist. I, I care about it and I observe what goes on in the town. My comments relate to number two Whitney Drive. And I know there's a second home that's going to be called Four Whitney Drive. And I talk directly to the developer, Frank White, I think his name is. It has to do with, my, my comments have to do with the portion of the lot, they own all that lot up to the mitigated area that's owned by the county. Except on the other northern side is owned by the town of Ocean Ridge. It's under a lease to the county where Corren Street goes up. So it's considered a natural area. Between the, what they're doing now is removing trees, none of which were diseased. There were some trees that were about a, at least a hundred years old. At any rate, they're going to build, they have a buildable percentage of the lot, the rest of it's going to be mitigated, right? That they can't build on. And that merges into the county property. And the concern I have, you can see it's two huge lots that they own now, is that area that merges into the county, which is still their property, is overrun by exotic invasive plants. I mean, I could name a bunch of them. Brazilian pepper, there's almond trees in there, there's Australian pines. Who is responsible when they do review of quote landscape to require that the developer clean out the invasive plants? They're just going to keep overrunning the area and they're going to overrun into the county area. Brazilian pepper will just keep going. Florida holly, they call it. So I don't know if anyone thought about reviewing, I don't know, I know, I know you're not going to have very many properties like this left in the town. But there is a concern about the invasive species that are in there. I can't walk there, it says posted no trespassing, but of course I wouldn't walk there anyway. But he's there every day, most of the time, they're trying to put fill in. They're going to put a, a retaining wall so that the property's level when they build. I don't know how far up they're going to come. I didn't, I didn't get that information. I haven't reviewed all the backup documents either. But the retaining wall, beyond the retaining walls, all this natural area that's still on their property. So who's responsible for getting them to clean it out? He told me that he was not responsible. When I asked him, it was, it was a pleasant conversation. But he's claims he's not responsible. Does the county come in and tell them to do it? Do we get the county involved in an, in an issue in Ocean Ridge? I don't know. So that's why I'm bringing it to your attention. People should go there and look, you'll see that I'm not exaggerating the problem. It's full of stuff that's going to keep growing. Now, a lot of these plants are what they call volunteer, a bird or a raccoon or a wind can deposit a seed and then they, they take off.
So. A question, is the area submerged?
The submerged part, I think, starts a little bit further. Did you review it? Did you look at it?
Yes.
Yeah, so you know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
And did you see the, you, did you identify anything that shouldn't be there?
No, I don't think, I was thinking about your, your comment and question. And I'm not sure there's anything in the town code that specifically addresses the rule of.
That's my point of bringing it up.
Does or doesn't?
Well, it tells you what you can plant and what you can't.
It doesn't address what's already there.
Yeah, exactly.
And there are a lot of codes that do require that whenever you develop a property, you remove all exotic species. And, and very often there's a, a list of preferred species and, and exotic invasive species, which is what you're, you're speaking to.
Yeah, there's a bunch of them. Here's Mr. Jerry.
Yes, so, Mr. Brown, you are correct, there is a big hole in our system with regards to that. Not only at this site, also the Dune area.
Yes.
But the truth is, I'm not personally equipped, nor is our community standards. So what we've been looking into, we've actually, we're requesting for the next project cycle to hire arborists that will actually help us make this determination. Because, for example, the Brazilian pepper, there is a Florida tree, that's what I was whispering to Porter, trying to remember what it is, that looks very similar to the Brazilian pepper. That's there. So we actually need trained eyes that would help us do these investigations.
There's people that live in this town. Once you identify them, what happens?
Then they, there is a requirement to remove them. But again, I'm not equipped to go oh and point.
No, I wasn't suggesting.
What needs to be removed? We don't have those tools at the moment, but I have put it in next year's budget.
I was suggesting that you have someone. You contract with the county?
Yeah, and, and be able to do that. And I, I want to point out as well, there's a new bill with regards to what owners can and cannot remove from their property. So literally, if they get an arborist or a landscape architect to sign off on anything, towns no longer have the ability to challenge or to require them to replant two or three by one plant that was taken down. Or they have to put in a plant the same year as the one they took over. That's gone, we can no longer do it. So I think this also is timely because this will also help us figure out ways that we can strategize.
This is beyond the retaining wall I'm talking about.
Yes, on that side, but I'm, I'm saying in general with regards to other rules that are coming on board. With, with.
Everything's being preempted, you won't mean anything at all.
Right, so. That should help.
The reason I asked, because wetlands have a whole different.
Yes. I don't know what, where the wetlands start, where it gets mushy with water or not.
I mean, it looks like.
Depends on the time of year and time of day.
That's right.
Today.
Now it'll be wet because of the.
Okay.
Anyway, it's something you need to keep an eye on.
All right, thank you, Terry. There's no further. Staff.
Let her rip.
I, I, I.
Is there a local store nearby where we can get a drawing table for a large plan? Local stores.